All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. If everybody could please rise for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, per policy BDA, which is the school committee organizational meeting, which is this evening, I am calling this meeting on order. And our first piece of business is to allow for the election of a brand-new chair, who then, once the chair is elected, will preside over the remainder of the meeting. So at this point, I will take a motion for a chair of the school committee for 2016-2017.
Make a motion to nominate Diane Duncan as chair? Second.
Okay, so a motion by Tana, seconded by Lee. Per state law and per our policy for chair and for vice-chair, those have to be by roll call, those votes. We will start with Phil.
Phil Disutter, aye.
Do I extend or do you?
No, you vote. You can say aye if you really want to.
It's your choice, Diane.
Diane Duncan, aye.
Tana Jango, aye.
Dorothy Scally, aye.
Okay, so by a vote of five to zero, congratulations, Madam Chair. The meeting is yours.
Thank you. Okay, so continuing right along, we need a nomination for a vice-chair.
I nominate Tana Jango for vice-chair.
Second.
Okay, is it the same thing, roll call vote as well? So we'll do a roll call vote for vice-chair.
Phil Disutter, aye.
Diane Duncan, aye.
Tana Jango, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Okay, so by a vote of five to zero, Tana Jango is our new vice-chair. Moving right along, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Anything need to be moved? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda is approved. Moving right along to approval of meeting, open session meeting minutes from May 9th, 2016. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the open session minutes, May 9th, 2016?
Second. Is there any discussion? Anything that needs to be changed? I'm good with it all? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the open session meetings pass, minutes pass. We're moving right along to reorganization of the school committee. So we have a number of open positions, secretary, TAF library trustee, Ristine Fund representative, and assistant treasurer. So, do we do this in the same fashion, Joe?
Sure, just a motion and a motion, a second, and then it can just be a conventional vote. It doesn't have to be a roll call.
It does not have to be a roll call vote. Okay, so our secretary in the past has been Dorothy. Do we have anybody with a burning desire?
And keep in mind, for secretary, your responsibilities essentially would be the minutes for executive session.
Excellent job.
Outstanding job being done for open session.
Yes, thank you, Kelly. Does anybody want to do it? Dorothy, do you not want to do it?
I can do it again.
Are you sure? You don't have to.
We just need to be able to get a computer.
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if somebody wants to make a motion?
I make a motion for to nominate Dorothy Scally as secretary.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Dorothy, you continue to be our secretary. TAF library trustee must be remanded. So, Lee, been our trustee in the past?
I would really like to continue being the trustee. In a position of transition right now, and I'd really like to help get them settled into the new building, work on policy, and continue the work that we've been doing. If that's acceptable to you, engage me.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, so we need to make a motion to continue? Make a motion to continue with Lee Martin as trustee for the TAF library? Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ristine Fund representative, this person must be from Upton. Presently, it's Tana. Do we have any other? Would you like to continue?
I'm okay to continue, or if Phil, you are just in your bed?
You are in the groove, you are in the mood, you know all the people.
Okay, so Tana's gonna continue.
If you don't wanna do it, I'm happy to do it. But if you have no problem with anything, it's just easy.
Okay, so we just need a motion?
I make a motion for Tana Jango to be the Ristine Fund representative.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go, Tana. Okay, so currently, our assistant treasurer is Pam, and it would probably be helpful to keep Pam in this role. So Pam, vote on her when she's not here.
That's the best time. If she rejects it, I will adjust it.
As I say in my background notes, it's helpful from a very pragmatic standpoint.
Yeah, because you don't have to change the votes.
She signed off on all the bank paperwork and stuff.
Okay, so could we get a motion?
I make a motion for Pam Martin to be the assistant treasurer.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, so Pam continues as our assistant treasurer. Okay, so do the treasurer, school committee clerk, Blackstone Valley Educational Collaborative representative?
They technically have to be voted upon.
Okay, so each one individual. So right now, our treasurer is Joe Lakeew. Our clerk is Kelly. Our Blackstone Valley Educational Collaborative representative is?
Yep, it is.
Okay, so could I get a motion for treasurer? Make a motion for Joe Lakeew to be the treasurer? Second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, school committee clerk, motion. Make a motion for Kelly McElwes to serve as our school committee clerk? Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And for the Blackstone Valley Educational Collaborative representative? Make a motion for Joe Marusha to be our Blackstone Valley Educational Collaborative representative. It's an awful.
Your second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So more business, we have four functioning school committee subcommittees that have to be appointed. Currently, right now, our budget subcommittee is Tana, Phil, and Lee. Policy is Pam, Lee, and Dorothy. Negotiations is Phil, Pam, and Diane. And superintendent's evaluation is Diane, Tana, and Dorothy. So I came up with the list based on submitting our preferences through the Google Doc?
Correct.
Yeah. So we can discuss this, but I'll just tell you what I came up with. So on budget would be Phil, Tana, and Pam. Superintendent evaluation would be Dorothy, Lee, and Diane. Policy would be Dorothy, Lee, and Tana. And negotiations would be Diane, Phil, and Pam. Do we have any discussion about this? Any? Anybody not wanting one of those subcommittees? Or is everybody pretty pleased with them in general? Okay, so do we do this collectively saying that? Or do you pass the emotion?
Yeah, you could vote en masse for all four.
You could read those again, because I did not wipe them down.
Okay, can I make a motion?
No, I should take my other.
Here you go.
I make a motion that we align following committee participants in the following way. Budget will be Phil, Tana, and Pam. Superintendent evaluation will be Dorothy, Lee, and Diane. Policy will be Dorothy, Lee, and Tana. Negotiation will be Diane, Phil, and Pam.
Well, I think we'll discuss that in a second. Okay, so? Second. Okay, since we've already discussed, all those in favor?
Aye.
So it passes. Additionally, there's one other subcommittee that we formed last year. Yeah, actually, last year, the Golden Apple Award Subcommittee. And right now, I believe we have Phil, Dorothy, and myself interested in serving on that. Is that, are you okay with that, Tana? Or would you like to serve on it?
I would like to serve on it.
Oh, you would like to serve on it. Do we always just have to have three, Joe? Can you have more? Or does it have to just be three?
It could be anything that you guys want it to be.
Okay, so?
You know, I think the discussion would be, do you have a desire to make this a permanent standing committee? Or do you keep it technically as it is now, as an ad hoc committee?
What are the benefits or?
Right now, you're in a good place with having four standing committees. Just looking at it really simply from an equity standpoint, that six members of the committee, you each have two functioning subcommittees. And by our school committee policy and by our charter, your subcommittees are three members. Because it is not considered to be a standing committee, you have, and right now, it's an ad hoc committee, you have flexibility. For example, you could say, okay, I want community representatives, and I want parent representatives, and two members of the school committee to be on Golden Apple. Or I want four members. You have that flexibility. Whereas our subcommittees, that are standing subcommittees, we have it kind of set by policy, by a structure of having three members.
So I think it uses to keep it as an ad hoc committee.
For now, and maybe you have the conversation as it's something that's fairly well-established, you know, two, three, four years down the line, you turn it into a standing subcommittee.
Okay, would there be a disadvantage of having four committee members? Or should we? Would there? Anything that you can think of that stands out as that's not a good idea? I mean, because I do wanna continue to involve?
Parents.
Parents from the community and citizens.
I think you're well-served to do that.
Yeah. I definitely would like to do that. We do need to put that out there to make sure we're open about it. So if we do nothing, like, I mean, it stands as an ad hoc committee right now, do we need to say exactly what it's gonna look like?
No, as an ad hoc committee, you don't have to define standing roles for the 16th, 17th school year.
So it would be almost better probably to keep it ad hoc as we work through it. And then when the timing comes up, to kind of form it on, based on what might be there. And while I'd love to participate, I also don't know exactly when the timing comes up.
If you'll be able to participate.
So should I be a sub-personal, your assets? Or have the four committee members onboard?
Well, I think the point is you don't have to.
You don't have to designate.
You don't necessarily have to find and designate at this point. When we start the process, then you can go and designate. You can designate from the parents and all of that. You can designate all of that.
So I am interested. Okay, so that's just good to know. So, because we're gonna be convening shortly, right? Do we have till the end of this week for nominations?
It closes on Friday the 10th.
Friday? Okay, so we don't actually have to do anything. We're just gonna continue as an ad hoc committee for Golden Apple.
Yep.
Okay, so I feel like we're finished our viewer organization and our subcommittees. Correct? Any community comments? Anybody from the public wish to say anything? Or have a question? Or? Okay. Moving right along to superintendent comments.
Okay. First off, I'd like to start with something that's very positive, very happy. I think it's a snapshot on the quality of our schools, the quality of our kids, and the community in general. I know that this is something that's very much made its way around social media. But our, we had 165 students graduate from NIPMUC on Friday. And the day before, right before our awards ceremony at NIPMUC, we started a new tradition known as the senior walk, where our graduating seniors kind of went back to their old stomping grounds. They went to Clough, Memorial, and Misco, and actually walked the halls and were recognized by their younger peers. So I just thought I'd show a very quick 40-second snippet of what it looked like when they started at Clough. So that's just a really quick snapshot. Very, very positive, very upbeat, very emotional for our graduates, for the little guys, you know, giving high fives with the teachers, you know, kind of seeing their old students. So very, very nice. I wanna publicly thank Diane, who found it and, you know, kind of gave me a jingle.
Innocently posted it.
On my page, on a Sunday morning, after I came back from my one run.
I just thought it was great.
But Diane bringing it to my attention three, four weeks ago, but then John Clements and Maria Moran from the high school, but also Kate Rudin, who's the senior advisor this year, really putting this together in short order. Again, it's very rare that you get such positive response and such goodwill from everyone. And this is something that just worked really well. I'm really looking forward to continuing this tradition from year to year. Second.
Can I just say, my daughter was very hesitant. She's a graduate, she was very hesitant about doing it. And her text to me at 12:39 that day was, "That was so cute." So it was very well-received by all the seniors.
I think the teachers really enjoyed it, too. Like, I think there were so many different parties that really just got good, positive, like, feedback from it. Teachers, the students, the older students, the younger students, the administration. I think it just was a great feel-good moment. And it really does pay tribute to where these kids came from.
Well, this class, I know my daughter's first grade was the first grade in Memorial School. So they opened the brand-new school.
That's right.
So it was almost kind of fitting that their first, that it was the first year that they went back to those schools to walk the hallways.
And at Memorial, you had some of the little kids who actually made signs for the... And seeing the, you know, first and second graders high-fiving kids and, you know, the teachers, you know, with big hugs for the graduates.
Very impactful.
Yeah, very meaningful, very moving. So delighted to have that as a new Minton-Upton tradition.
Thank you, thank you for initiating it.
So secondly, I just wanna kind of publicly put out a reminder to our, to really all stakeholders, but particularly to our parents. We are a little bit over the halfway point of our school quality survey through K-12 Insight. So I know over a week ago, I put out an email to parents saying, hey, be on the lookout for an email from K-12 Insight, who's doing the surveying for us. So that has gone out. I sent out a reminder first thing this morning with a link to the actual survey. If you go to our website, mursd.org, there's a live link on that. So you can kind of see the trend. We're up to 636 of our parents have responded out of 1404. So that kind of corresponds to about a 32% response rate, which isn't horrible, but we'd like to do a little bit better. K-12 Insight, the reason that they like to have individual parent emails is it has a mechanism so that, and it's the same thing for our staff, that if you haven't responded to the survey, it kind of tortures you every five days with a reminder email. So you can kind of, if you look at this bar graph trend, you can see when the reminder emails went out.
That's funny.
Surprise, surprise. And this was good. I mean, at the end of yesterday, you can see people obviously enjoyed the weekend. Four responses on Saturday, three responses on Sunday. But today, it shot up to 109 people responded.
Which is great.
So it closes at midnight on Friday. So just to kind of, you know, again, we'll send out more reminders, but if you haven't responded, please do so. It probably takes no more than 10 minutes to respond to the survey. And it's really important that we get all stakeholders' feedback. We're at about 55% response rate for our staff members and about 85% response for our kids. Okay? That's great. Next, we have, I just feel it's important to give an update with regard to where we are with next year's budget, the FY17 budget. We've got good news, but also some challenges. And the good news and the challenges, at least from a financial standpoint, offset each other. Okay, I'll start with the good news. We did markedly better right now in the budget process through the House and the Senate than we used in the governor's budget. If you recall, when the budget was certified back in March, we used the governor's budget. And then in April comes out the House budget, and then in May came out the Senate budget. So with regard to the Senate budget, you've got two major drivers. First, you have an increase in Chapter 70 of about an additional $77,000. The Senate and the House budgets provided an additional $55 per student over FY16, whereas the governor's budget was only an additional $20 per student. So there is that additional $77,000. The Senate budget, at least the initial Senate Ways and Means budget, provided an additional $71,000 in regional transportation, which is approximately at about the 70% reimbursement rate. And then kind of a recalculation of our net charter expenses in the district's favor of about $81,000. So the sum total right now through the Senate Ways and Means budget is about an additional $230,298 above what was certified. So that's great news. However, the challenges are some of the expenses. I know over the last couple of meetings, I've kind of provided updates of where we are with regard to health insurance. Our initial renewal rate that was quoted to us was 19.59%. So we've kind of, myself and Jay have kind of gone back and forth with Harvard Pilgrim Health. We've locked in at FY17 at 15%, which is better than the 19.59. It's still high. Realize we've kind of done our due diligence in the sense that we've gotten quotes from all of the other four major carriers. The 15% honestly was the absolute best that we could do, based upon our claim history for FY16. Very, very challenging. So that 15%, keep in mind, the certified budget, we were banking on a 10% increase. That additional 5% represents about $189,000 above what we budgeted. Another big expense that we did not anticipate were the amount of students choosing to enroll at Norfolk Aggie. I believe we budgeted for four, Jay?
Budgeted for seven.
Budgeted for seven, and we're looking at 10.
Right, we had three graduates, which brought us down to four. I left the three graduates, I left money in for those three. Thinking maybe we'd have three more. We had?
Six more. So that expense for those three additional students is $72,000 between their tuition and transportation.
So are there six more students, all freshmen?
Eighth graders going into.
One, I think, one of them might be a sophomore this year. I'm not sure where that student was freshman year.
So between those two expenses, you're talking about, you know, something in the ballpark of about $260,000, which kind of offsets the increase of $230,000 in additional state aid. So it's very, very close to a watch. I gave you a document called Teeing Up the Differences, which kind of systematically, big picture, goes through the differences between the House budget and the Senate budget. You know, the good news moving forward, FY18 and beyond, the Senate budget does very much commit to the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations. So in the event that we would be looking at FY18 and beyond with that additional $55 per student, that would serve the district very well. However, there's still a lot of variables. You know, if you follow what's going on with the state budget with the globe, right now, with one month left to go, there are about $300 million below projections as far as revenue. So I think there's still a lot of variables. You know, as you know, the favorite few words, "subject to appropriation." So there's still a lot of variables, but I think right now we're kind of at status quo as far as that additional resources that we could be looking at above what was certified versus some of the expenses that we've gotten. Any questions on any of them? And then, but last but not least, you should have in your packet our year-to-date FY16 expenditure report. Jay, is there any lines that you kind of wanna highlight?
No, nothing specific to highlight that's in there. The only thing I did notice based on the report, the warrant that you're signing tonight, was it doesn't show up on that report till after she actually puts it through today. So, you know, we're down to about $1,000,500 left at this point with four weeks to go. We will probably, we easily have a lot more bills to come through in the next six to eight weeks that will be charged against that. But I'm fairly confident that we're gonna finish in a good position in the end.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so moving on to subcommittee updates. Doing a first read of policy KF-R, school facility use regulations, and then new policy EFD, charging collection of payment for school meals. Lee and Dorothy, is there anything you wanna share with us about these?
Let's see. Policy KF-R is a revision of an existing policy. We are trying, initially upon Jay's recommendation, we're trying to bring the facility use fees kind of more in line and more appropriate to comparable districts. There were, there was an extra category that really didn't need to be there that was removed. There was also some, we reviewed kind of the procedure for security deposit type of thing in case of, you know, being a little more proactive about that. And additionally, I think there was some language that was tightened up around having a staff member run IT equipment and that type of thing as well. So I believe those are the major highlights. Jay, is there anything else that I didn't address?
No, I think you've pretty much covered it. The policy hasn't really changed with the exception of eliminating Group 4 and adjusting the fees to get them more in line with what other districts are charging. Our fees, quite frankly, were bordering on outrageous.
Yeah, they were fairly resold.
I think we were, we had people not using our facilities because they could go somewhere else at half the cost. So we tried to get them to use it. So we tried to get our, I did a survey, we tried to get the fees in line with other districts.
Okay. Okay, so we'll be revisiting that further later on.
And policy EFD is a new policy that I think had been addressed earlier in our school committee, uh, school committee meeting earlier a few weeks ago. In that we need to look at what's appropriate in terms of students having an outstanding balance in terms of the school lunch accounts. So there was no policy that existed and we did need to have something, you know, because there were, there are kind of significant losses that we're incurring. So without this language, you know, makes it a little bit of a gray area. So this, you know, is a fairly comprehensive policy. I haven't read through it, do you read through it? But I think it handles things sensitively, where students will not be stigmatized if they're carrying a bag.
Yeah, and they'll still be able to get a lunch.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
And, you know, and the free and reduced lunch, students will still remain in the, in the position that they're in, but it will help the district collect the revenue that's owed to us in a reasonable, responsible manner and allows the, you know, the food service director, the kind of, and Jay, to communicate clearly to parents, just in case it's an oversight and that kind of thing. We have a protocol in place now, which doesn't exist, you know, at the current time with, when this policy is enacted.
Do you mind me asking where you guys came up with the, like, how did you make the decision about how, how overdrawn you could be? Like, I think it's $30. You can go $30 in the hole. I'm just wondering where you came up with that figure.
I think we figured it was about two weeks.
About two weeks of lunch.
You know, on regular prices.
So an opportunity to collect, it gives you, okay.
Right.
I was just curious.
Yeah. We tried to look at two weeks for both bad and for the free and reduced as well. It's kind of harder on free and reduced, we were only paying 40 cents.
Right.
Not the free, but the reduced, obviously the free, it's not an issue. Part of this came about because the audit that was done, the one thing that we had not done in the past that we're supposed to be doing is at the end of every fiscal year, if you have negative balances, we're supposed to zero them out and pay them off. So this year we're looking at about $4,500 that we're going to have to cover. I will be creating a line item in the budget for next year and funding it at about $5,000 or $6,000 because.
To account for this.
Just to account for this in the future. Now, we will always continue to try to collect that money, but on the bookkeeping side, we're supposed to wipe it out. So we needed some kind of leverage to try and encourage parents to keep up to date on these accounts without depriving kids of lunch or stigmatizing them.
Right.
It's typically not the kids' fault that the lunch account is overdrawn.
Yep. I was just curious. Okay, and so we'll be voting on that later as well?
On the 20th, yeah.
On the 20th? Okay. New business. We never took a formal vote for the increased life, excuse me, lunch prices for 2016, '17, which I believe is increasing by a dime.
Yeah.
From $2.75 to.
$2.85.
$2.85, starting next year.
And milk is staying the same?
I honestly have no idea how much milk costs. I think, isn't it part of the lunch?
No.
Well, it does come, it does come with your lunch, if you buy a lunch, but if you were buying a milk to supplement your lunch from home, it's $50.
I, we did not address that. It used to be a nickel when I went to school, so. 10 cents for two chocolate milks, that's what I remember.
Wow, that's good.
It's just, it just as background, and I know we covered this over the last couple of meetings, realize the last time lunch prices went up was in 2010. They went from $2.50 to $2.75. And it's when Jay gave his presentation back in April. The heart of the matter is really, the dime is to keep up with inflation, but also to keep up with the reimbursement rates that we get from events. So right now, we get a reimbursement rate of $2.93 for every lunch, which is, you know, by a factor of 18 cents more than we're actually charging. So the 10 cents kind of brings it closer in line to the reimbursement rate. And Jay, your, your cost analysis, this will pretty much put us in a good place for four years or so.
Five or six years.
Five or six years.
Yeah.
So I think that's fairly reasonable.
Right. And we're also going to try to do a much stronger job at the end of this year and the beginning of next year in encouraging people to fill out the free and reduced application, even if you don't think you qualify, because ironically, we actually do better if people are on free and reduced than if they're not. So if people are eligible, they should take advantage of it to, to their benefit and it's to our benefit as well. We can't require people to fill it out, but we're going to try and encourage people, even if you don't want to give them the information, fill it out, just put not interested on it or something, just to encourage people to get in the habit of filling that application out every year.
And it's based on a household income?
Yes. Household income and number.
Number students.
Individuals, no, not students, that, family members. So mother, father, three children, then it's a house of five. And then they have a chart that gives you, basically you to qualify for free or reduced, depending on where your income falls in those areas.
Okay. Okay. So could I get a motion to vote on our new lunch price increase?
Make a motion to raise the lunch price to $2.85.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes. And then, Joe, I'll hand it over to you for announcement of school choice openings for 16, '17.
Okay. So just per our school committee policy, policy JFBV on school choice and also Mass. General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, here is a public sharing of what we have for openings with regard to school choice. And what I'll do is I will rattle them off by school and then grade level free school. So at Clough Elementary School and kindergarten, we will have five openings for kindergarten and five openings for Spanish immersion kindergarten. And in grades one through four, zero openings. At Memorial, we have five openings for kindergarten, zero openings for Spanish immersion kindergarten, and also no openings in grades one through four. At Misco Hill for grade five, we have 15 openings. In grade six, we have nine openings. In grade seven, we have six openings. And in grade eight, we have four openings. At Nipmuck Regional High School, we have 12 openings for grade nine, five openings for grade 10, five openings for grade 11, and zero openings for grade 12. As we've done in years past, should these change as far as our enrollment, because there usually is some movement, what we will do is at our meeting of August 22nd, I'll publicly announce any changes to that. Okay?
Okay.
So, quick question? I know probably in August you'll also have the numbers more definitive in terms of the eighth to ninth grade transition. How many students went to different locations? But how is that looking in comparison to years past?
I think it's looked very, very stable as to comparing 2015 to 2016. Anticipate will probably have a freshman class of approximately 160 to 170 students.
Okay. Any correspondences? No? Any other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours in the next meeting? None? Okay. So our future agenda items on June 20th are approval of the Mersey Technology Plan as well as the Golden Apple Award. A nomination?
That in the, our open forum next week, right?
Yes. Which is, actually I have to pull it up to see the date, I believe it's the 15th. June 15th. We're going to be having a meeting at the Upton Town Hall at 6:30, from 6:30 to 8:00 on the ground level, where members of the public from Mendenhamton are all welcome to join us. And we're going to have kind of an open forum. We'll have a little agenda to follow, but all are welcome and we hope people will come and participate.
Is that for June 15th?
June 15th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Upton Town Hall. We're going to try to alternate between communities and we're also going to try to alternate, like, a nighttime meeting with a daytime meeting as well. So we can try to accommodate different towns as well as different schedules. And we're going to, our hope is to have at least three school committee representatives. Sometimes there may be more, if, you know, people are available. And then Golden Apple nominations are through the end of this week, right? Through Friday?
Also through Friday.
Just like the school satisfaction surveys. So Friday's a big day.
If you also go to our website, mursd, to write the cover, and you just click on the link, and it will.
There it is.
There it is.
And if you've submitted a nomination from the prior period, there's, Joe added in a quick, I would like to submit my prior nomination. And that's a quick. Here's my name, here's my nomination, and you're done for the day. So just want to add that in. So it doesn't have to be rewriting everything that you wrote the first time. So I think that's it. I think we've covered everything. So I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned at 7:49.